Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from sin. For thine commandment, and the power, and the glory of the Lord shall be revealed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, the Texas one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
The sheriff wanted to put the comment that you...
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Judge, if we could go ahead and take care of that.
Well, I have a proclamation I have from Public Safety Dispatches Week, April 13th, 1914.
We could have all the dispatchers from...
Someone call up here?
This week is National Telecommunicators Week. That's Public Safety Dispatchers. If you call 911s and no one is there, I can answer the phone. Whereas the Wilson County Communication Dispatchers play a vital role in the protection of human life and property in our community. And whereas Wilson County Communication Dispatchers have been successfully serving the public safety communications need of the area for years. And whereas calling during long shifts and handling frequent life death emergencies, communication dispatchers set high standards in performing their duties in a dedicated, diligent, and compassionate manner. And whereas communication dispatchers provide a critical communication link between the citizen and police, fire, and emergency medical service providers. And whereas communication dispatchers efficiently coordinate emergency services for both man-made and natural disasters to ensure the health and safety of our citizens, travelers, and tourists in our cities and towns, on our highways and backcountry, 24 hours a day. And whereas communication dispatchers are rarely visible to their public while performing an exceptional service that deserves praise and recognition. Now therefore be it resolved that Commissioners Court of Wilson County proclaims April 13th through 19th, 2014 as National Telecommunicator Week in the county of Wilson and convenes the devotion, contribution, and services of these communication dispatchers.
We've got certificates. You want to give those out first and then I'll give these. And then we'll play a little video. Whatever.
Eva Harold. Danielle Brown. Isabella. Candace Lassiter. Annalise Martinez. Cassandra Martinez. Lisa Montgomery. Ashley Perez. Rebecca Perez.
And also have some certificates here from Congressman Henry Quayor. Aggression also give recognition. In honor of Public Safety Telecommunicators Week 2014, do you have proof to be a committed citizen of your community through your illustration of team values, morality, and discipline? All examples of true commitment to the public service. Signed, Henry Quayor. Also have something else here for Danielle. As most of you know, last week's Sunday, she got the source. And for Danielle's hard work, she was able to find out about the silver alert. And she was able to get it out. And I guess it goes out all over the United States. I heard people from other areas calling in and saying that they saw it. So anyway, this is for Danielle Brown. It says, "In recognition of the achievement of implementing the silver alert that assisted in the quick recovery of missing persons judged medial floors." And it's signed by Pauline Fours and signed by myself. And today is her day. She thinks that Florida's going to be nice with this. National Public Safety Telecommunications for the Telecommunicator. And that was, that act was implemented in 1999 by Congress. And it basically recognizes and honors our dispatchers and communicators in law enforcement and public safety. And certainly they are the heroes behind the lines that rarely get any attention, rarely get any recognition for the work they do. But you couldn't do it without them. And on that first day, the sheriff looked down at his plan for the sheriff's office and said, "I need someone to watch over these deputies." So the sheriff hired a dispatcher. Sheriff said, "I need someone who will get up before dawn." Half the day, Miss Allison. Work 40 hour week in three days. So the sheriff hired a dispatcher. Sheriff said, "I need someone who will answer 911 lines, give pre-arrival instructions, deal with group people, ask all the right questions, call all the right people, document it all in 100 words per minute." So the sheriff hired a dispatcher. Sheriff said, "I need someone willing to sit at a computer all day, call out a record, cancel that record, give directions, listen to their problems, give the same directions again, answer their supervisor's questions, put callers on hold, run a registration, run a driver's license, run a criminal history, give a case number, squeeze in a battery break, find that information, add that information into the call, find a translator, talk to the media, calm the crying parents on the phone, deal with irate parents, give CPR instructions, stay on the phone and listen to the gut-wrenching screams, and then calmly answer the phone and help the next one." So the sheriff hired a dispatcher. Sheriff said, "I need someone to watch over 100 deputies on the radio, check on the unit, repeat everything they say, type everything they say, run all those driver's licenses, run their registrations, check on that stolen car, run four criminal histories, check on that wanted man, check on that unit again, print everything, call the district attorney, call the judge, call the bodyguard, call the other agency, check on that unit, dispatch, call holding, inform the sergeant, call the battalion, need a cold dinner, call for mutual aid, call for lifeline, get more backup, check on that pursuit, work that shooting, stay calm and cool as steel when you hear your deputy screaming for help. And they need to send them all home safely at the end of the night." So the sheriff hired a dispatcher. Sheriff said, "I need someone who will do all that for an entire shift with a smile, no complaints, and then do it all again tomorrow." So the sheriff hired a dispatcher. They're professionals and we want to recognize and honor them for what they do for our agency and for the citizens we serve. And they all seem to love. It's a stressful job, it's one that you don't get to move around a lot, but you certainly use your brain. If you haven't got one, you don't stay long. So they're very smart analytical folks and they miss out a lot with their families because of the strange hours. It's 365 days a week, 24/7. And they are the lifeline for all of us. That's who we're calling for help. So the first responder who's going to help is calling the dispatcher for help. So it's a team effort and we thank them for this.
Yes, sir. You know, next big crack.
Hello? I have three certificates complete.
I have none.
I have four. A blue bond. Chris, do you have that one?
Yes, that one's mine.
Item four on the agenda was an extension agent report that the extension department furnishes each one of the commissioners.
Item six, public hearing courthouse annex 1, 2, 3. Updated comments and questions. And this is public hearing, so anyone who has a comment or question may do so. Mr. Lynn, do you have anything for us?
I do, yes. We've been in contact this week, or last week, with the state on our... We spoke to them last week and they said, "By Thursday or Friday this week as we pass off round one, there's something crucial round two now where they actually sit through a portion of these two. So we should be Thursday or Friday this week. Get some answers from them, which we've been waiting for. Hopefully get good news. Seems to be all good, everything so far. We had the, what they told us, we had the most comprehensive package submitted. Had one of the other, also we felt pretty good about that. They've had no real questions on our end. Is that sort of, that's where we are now.
And so if we get that, we're ready to go with the courthouse?
Yes, we'll just wait for them then. So you said, just let us know. I'm sure they'll probably do what's left of paperwork and what needs to be filed. We're trying to get that from them as we speak right now. I'm not sure of the softball, but eventually get back from our extension goal last week. So we have that in order. We went through looking at what benching we think we could, all the surplus that we could use. We have more than everything he said they had now. Some are too small, some are too long, some are too bright. We go through those and I think we've selected having...
I think they're always going to try.
Yes, exactly. So we're trying to see ones that we can get them. Courtroom, IV, why the least amount of reworking. And then we could use other store, general lobby seating. So that's a plan process for that. And then the other thing I'd like to bring up is, I think now would be a good time to look at the project's hole for the Colorado Center with the removal of trees and anything that I'm not sure whether on the bridge or whether the campus hole maybe have ability to maybe get a little head in the game where we can stop anything shooting. And then with, you know, the candy cops are all lying straight to the general contractor.
Are they buying trees?
I believe so, yes. And we can get that and go through it.
And the fence is between, you know, the fence could be taken out and just set it in the ends. Because it's, you know, it's not a, the building's the next thing, you know. And then another thing that we discussed was if there's going to be some demolition needed in that building. And I told him, I said, "I didn't think part of the crew would be interested in that, but maybe a local contractor that somebody might know would be more economical than using a tailor company or his company and be under his supervision, what was demolition. That's something to give some thought to. If you ever have someone that might, or anybody in the audience should have somebody that's capable and can work under that supervision and do that would be a good thing.
Do you have to rebuild that for that Justice Center?
On the Colorado Center? We have the tapes and we've been reviewing them as we speak right now. So through our suite, they're looking at them. So I'm actually reading that with the things off this. Before we finalize, we were comparing office documents to get the original tapes. What we have is five samples. So we should know one in this week. I'll get some, get a few back later.
Those trees, were they laid in front of the courthouse or the side?
On the third street, along Third Street on the...
Right there here. Not at the courthouse.
No, no. Where the criminal justice.
I think there's some buried areas, I think, maybe save some money.
There are some ash trees and one of them dead already. Anybody in the audience or anything, have anything to, questions, comments, or anything about the annex 1, 2, or 3? Thank you very much.
We're excited, hopefully we can get good news again through.
I'm ready to see some stuff happen. There's a one house.
We've got the momentum going now, we want to keep it going. We've got to do that.
And I guess either good news or bad news, it really all sort of begins after Thursday or Friday. If we get good news, that's great. If we get bad news, you know we don't have to worry about it. So we should be moving within 30 days, right?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping doing. So we've got the, the county, I believe, have made all the corrections to the contract we sent to them. They sent back in the last week. Remind them, they make some little corrections to the terms of this. So hopefully we should have that very early.
Thank you, appreciate much. Item seven. Duran, Goay, Betty. Methodist Air Care, discuss, take action on Methodist Air Care, Air Med Care, Network, membership as a benefit option in county and state.
My name is Jared Floyd. I'm the membership sales manager with Methodist Air Care. It's my other full-time job, also firefighter, paramedic, city of Kerrville. So hopefully if there's any questions throughout this, fire ambulance, I can answer some of the pre-hospital stuff that I've experienced and then follow them down the membership. You know, Methodist Air Care works operated by Reach, which is one of our providers from the air medical group holdings, which is a tiny cabinet, it's a company. Here locally, we have bases in San Antonio, Pearson, and Seguin. Operator FAA Part 135, paramedical operator. The type of stuff we do is for the education part of this, through our companies, is the hospital, hospital transfer. So this example, that would be, let's say, walking to a hospital with chest pain. They find out you're having a heart attack, something like that. They need to get you to a cath lab as soon as possible. Most local hospitals don't have that. They'll transport you, obviously helicopters will quick respond. And also scene flights. You know, that can also be medical where the paramedics have called to empty to the proper facility, works wrong such as car accidents, things like that. We're staffed with 15 registered nurses, 15 paramedics, and 12 helicopter pilots. So horrible from staff. We are commissioned through CAMPs, which is a commission on air medical transport services. Just in the air, we have our cardiac monitors, ventilators, IV pumps, anything you can do in the ER, we can do there, including TPA for getting treatment for strokes and heart attacks, things like that, ventilation, ISOLs for pediatric, things like that. We operate with all of our air ambulance safety training through the FAA. Make sure all are got onto that. Sponsor a lot of things in our community, we're a big community company. Tech EMS Week, High School Career Day, Saddle Dreams, all that stuff. Regional meetings in the area, health fairs, things like that. Would like to be a part of that. That's just a little who we are and our operations, kind of what we do for air ambulance transport. We've been recognized in the industry for our excellent safety service, quality and equipment, personnel, and dedication of our team and funding equipment to continue this legacy. Which brings me to the point of why I'm here, which is our membership program is the Air Med Care Network. Okay? Being a member of the Methodist Air Care automatically involves in the Air Med Care Network and all four of our companies. It's Air Evac, Med Trans, Reach, and Eagle Med. And Reach is the Methodist Air Care program. And membership's pretty important, though a lot of people, you know, why is a membership needed? Whether it's a heart attack or trauma, air ambulance is an integral part of healthcare. And this 24-hour savings, life-saving air ambulance company does some of the costs. Air ambulance bills can be annual for $20,000, $30,000. And that's industry standard, just for air ambulance bills. Most insurance is actually going to cover around $5,000 for that. So let's say you have a $25,000 air ambulance bill in your insurance company, most providers, the way it's operated and filed is about $5,000 for that, you're responsible for $20,000 to go out of pocket. What this membership does is actually takes that out-of-pocket expense and just wipes it away. So if someone's a member with us, and they get flown, they're not going to have a bill. Insurance will bill, they're not going to get a bill directly already now. The history of our program actually started about mid-1980s in West Place, Missouri, small community, it's Mary ambulance, middle of nowhere. And started this membership program and since then we've grown to what we are now, which is now 230 helicopters in 30 states nationwide. We're the largest independently operated, membership-supported air ambulance. So we're supported by our membership. Not only do you not get a bill, but that's actually our support we're coming. General memberships are $65 a year on consumer basis. We actually offer discounts, which we're here to talk about, for group rates. So for employee benefit, there's actually a couple options that you can give employees. Right now, just the list we have, we have Wollapie County has this as a benefit, Karnes County, Freeo County pays for their employees to have it, and McMullen County actually did the county website for this. Couple options that you can add are the annual plan, which is $55, and that's annually, and that will cover your employee and their whole household. That's as per person. That's for 50 or less employees and you can get to a discount of $45 for 150 employees. There's kind of a restriction on that. Employees paying for it, you're going on payroll due, and that is, you can only sign the employee up one time per year. On the annual, they're only. It's going to help with that, we have a monthly plan, and that is $6 a month. And that again covers the entire household, and that's for less than 150 employees and $5 for over 150 employees. Good part of that is it removes that annual restriction and you get a new hire throughout the year, someone who's changed up and quit. Something we've added, Freeo County, they actually pay for their employees to have this benefit. We didn't have this option then, but we actually came up with a census plan. And it real easy, makes it easier on the employee, or the employer. We don't have to come in and enroll, there's no application, anything like that. We take your number of employees from, let's say, 2013, you have 100 employees, 100 employees, and in 2014, you got 200 employees. You actually won't be charged for 120 employees. So it's 50% on the year-to-year growth, and it can go either way. Real simple. It's funded and all the employees are considered members at that time. So the ways to also help benefit this Wilson County as the employer is it can supplement current medical insurance, it lowers those costs. It's all a problem for lack of air ambulance coverage. It actually have a positive impact on your community. Oftentimes, air ambulance bills are caught stock, though as you said, can be tens of thousands of dollars. And this can actually keep that money inside your rollover comp instead of being billed out for air ambulance. What's cool about this, compared to other benefits, is that this is the only benefit you can actually get back to the community. Like I said, we're a membership-supported company. So when people have our membership, it supports that resource in the community. Stay around. If you're MSM, I'm going to be available throughout whatever transition and fully dedicated to helping your employees get covered and educating them and your community, they're welcome by our services. My dedication on that, and my information's there inside the folder. And if you want to answer any questions, if there aren't.
Anybody have a question?
I have a couple of questions. One, you don't have to sell me, we haven't had to use it, but we did this, my wife and I, all back, just because of an emergency, the time to respond. If I understand it right, if, and it's a big assumption, assuming that we did it for our employees at 150 as a benefit, then that would be $15, what was it, $45 per employee? And that covers them and their family.
That covers the entire household, yes. And then like I said, there's the option, that's the annual option. If you wanted to do it on the monthly option, that would be over $155 a month. And then if y'all were going to, if we were kind of to cover your employees, then I recommend the census plan would be the most money-saving for y'all. And that's the one that has the, you just take the number of employees and it's on the same pricing, it'd be the $45 for 150 employees. And then whenever y'all grow, however many you add, it'll only be 50% of the year-to-year growth. Like I said, if you have 100 employees and next year you have 140, we will take and only charge you 420.
But 150 is your top breakpoint as far as discounts?
No, no, there's more of that. If you, if there's a 300, we're a long way from 300.
Okay, so that was my question. And again, a big, but if we decided to offer or provide for a... And again, a big, but if we decided to offer or provide for our people, then it would be forty-five dollars annually, which would make more sense than, it's forty-five versus sixty. And, um, if we wanted to make it a menu item for our employees at Simon, kind of like Amblac, then it would be either six dollars or five dollars.
Depending on how many people sign up.
Depending on how many people sign up.
Yes, sir, that's absolutely right, you got it.
So if it's, if it's less than a hundred and fifty, it's going to be six.
It'd be the six.
And you're not going to get universal if, right, okay.
Oh, Commissioner Marano, would you, you be willing to head up a committee to?
I, what I'd like to do, Judge, with your permission, is, uh, just make this a part of our insurance committee, uh, because this falls right in with the other things that, that we've done.
Need to check, you know, to see if there's a duplication of services, you know, if you have some of those services available. Leeann.
If, if I could ask a couple of questions, what's with the, the, the network? Um, like you say, there's Air Evac.
Right, so that's all the companies that we own. So, um, it would be Air Evac, Med Trans, Eagle Med, and Reach, are all four of our companies, that's nationwide. So this isn't just for the ones that are here in San Antonio or Methodist Air Care, it's all in all of our companies.
Okay, so how does it work? And I'm thinking more from the response aspect out in the field, you've got a patient that you've got to, um, uh, transport by air, and they have their, their member.
Then how do we make sure we get the right?
But Air Life gets called.
Okay, that's actually a great question. Um, and, and I'll answer this on, on two parts. One, being firefighter, paramedic, and, uh, where I work, um, is that Air, Air Life, actually, we started a membership, as I said, in the nineteen eighties, and a lot of other helicopter companies have come along to do the same thing, because they see the benefit. They have a membership, and I encourage everybody, especially what I'm talking about, to look into that. That being said, that's where we go into education of, you know, dispatchers and first responders, uh, people who are with them, a member with us, you're going to get a sticker for your vehicle, for your home, a card for your wallet, things like that. And we go into educate, just like I had been before I started working, is that if they're a member, strike the flag for us. There's actually only two air ambulance services in San Antonio, one is out.
So then if that person is a member of your network, and they want to use that network, then whoever's there on scene, that first responder's going to have to take the time to look at the windshield or look at their wallet to see?
Right, well, you know, and that's if they're, that could be if they're conscious or unconscious, for sure. And I'm just talking about from a first responder standpoint, that's something that we are just trying to do, you know, if I'm, if I see something on the windshield, things like that, I, I'm known to, to do that stuff, it doesn't take long. And then, um, that won't be an issue if the person is unconscious, doesn't have any family around on scene, it's just a matter of education.
The Greenway, Oriole fly out of?
San Antonio, Pierceall, Methodist Air Care's facility, San Antonio, Pierceall, and Seguin, and then Air Evac, we have La Grange, Kerrville, Marble Falls, uh, Rado, Springfield. We're all surrounded everywhere, there's actually a nationwide map, and there will be.
Ditching or outside of town? Ditching Field or?
I'm sorry.
Where do we fly out of San Antonio?
We're actually by on top of Methodist Hospital, San Antonio.
Is, is there any, you might actually, I don't know the answer, is there anything that says if, if, if we decided to make this the designated group, because there are a number of carriers for the county, is there anything that would keep the dispatcher from calling this group? Or is it first come, first served?
They would have to be specifically told, I mean, because right now, I have it, I have it, because for years and years, and correct me, Sheriff, if I'm wrong, for years, Air Life was the only one.
Right.
And so it's just habit, I listen to the radio a lot here, you know, EMS is out there, or DPS, or whoever, and they say, they, radio dispatch is on, you know, put Air Life on standby, contact Air Life. And, and so now they're going to have to take the time to look and see, look for that sticker, or look in their wallet, or a bracelet, or something, and tell dispatch, and then if they tell, if Air Life responds.
And that's something also we can work with with dispatch as well, um, especially because really, you know who we want to come personally, I want, I want the closest available helicopter.
And, and I don't mean to pick on y'all, this is just a concern that I've got with all of these different companies out here.
And that's, and, and then, and there's just two of us in San Antonio, so that, that's in this whole area, there's just two, it's us and Air Life. Um, reason you're here about us now, because we came on around last July, um, as part of Air Medical Group Holdings, we were formerly this, uh, Reach and standalone, and now we're part of this, uh, big company that's nationwide and has nationwide coverage, where, where Air Life does it, they're a local company, which is good, and they're necessary. But, um, a lot of it go with just, uh, education with dispatch, and then also just, uh, let me on in and know where our locations are, because, uh, we have actually quite a few questions that are very close to y'all, and, and really you want the closest helicopter, you know, what's the best company, the one you're on, right? So we want the closest available, and we're actually either the exact same distance as Air Life, or in a lot of cases closer, we talk about our Pierceall base, so. But really, we just, and that might be something we can work on in the future, and I'd be glad to assist on that, just making sure the, the closest helicopter is to y'all, you know, no, no, not fucking one thing is the closest.
If, if it is a consideration, to me, to me, is, it's only a consideration if we can work it, uh, coordinate it with, with your folks.
Right.
And I would think that if we, if we took the approach and all the county employees were covered, that that would be, you know, a pretty simple thing, but I, I don't know that. It'd just have to be years of, well, like I said, like I said, EMS, fire, officer, everybody knows this call, right?
Right. And that's actually how it was in our town, well, this is where I work, is personal.
Right. And then, I mean, you know, the call may be to Air Life, apparently it's on the way, but then they do call.
That's exactly.
And, um, you know, you bet somebody can get off this, or do something, and, and discuss, you know, how we're going to try to use there a little more, but it's just the dispatch, they're going to do whatever the officer or EMS or whatever tells them what to do.
That's just education on our part, right? Glad to do it. And, um, you know, something that happened, and this is, is off topic of me being working with Methodist Air Care, something we did in our town, in Kirk County, is that we have this air medical transport, and actually have a little patient where I live, and they take turns, because we actually, in, where I live, there's actually both companies in that, in that. And they're also, they, they, like I said, Karnes County, Freeo County, Golden Lake County, um, all have this membership program, and it works out well, because, you know, if, if you have a membership or not, if you don't have any membership, I guarantee you can get a bill, you know? If you do have, if you have ours and get flown by us, I can tell you that I'm going to get that twenty, thirty thousand dollar bill, you're here. It's not happening, you're going to bill your insurance, and the rest of it is written off. So that potentially is a lot of money that stays economically, and just to have, not have that burden, because who knows when it's going to happen? You know, no one plans for someone on their life, you know, no one plans how it would affect that day.
Do you think you may have a meeting scheduled?
Uh, well, we don't have on the short term, but we'll have, we can certainly schedule one, and we'll have one in the near future in association with.
You gotta get contact information if you have any questions on anything. Appreciate everybody.
I guess, uh, just apologize if you want to see it. All right? Appreciate y'all's morning.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, you can call.
Hey, item eight, fifteen, Steven Good, Jerome Scott, two, five, five, nine, they'll make picnic tables, buy it right into the library.
Are you coming, boy?
Morning, ladies.
Are you coming, boy?
Our hands are really single and daily season with, we are currently, your, your staff, finishing five, we have partnered together so we can own our library. The library is very, very excellent. To our reward, we need to build a project that will help our community.
Looking at our community and starting to help our local library, we talked to Miss Thor the River, and she thought it'd be a good idea to add two picnic tables to the bike rack. The bike rack would be, would be for kids to ride their bikes to the library, if they walk down and say, oh, they enjoy the library. The picnic tables would be for families to come and enjoy eats next while visiting the library. The bike rack is made out of metal, dimensions are twenty-six inches wide and thirty-six inches tall. The bike rack is designed to hold six bags, the picnic tables are onward, the dimensions are twenty-eight inches by seventy-two inches. We would really like to maybe send some of our air, our air.
Well, we appreciate that. Miss Thor, is there something that the library can use?
Yes.
Motion, Commissioner Marano, that's a commission, all the papers, unanimous. Well, thank you, everybody, we appreciate it.
Do you mind if we take a picture? Y'all come back there. Let's take yours.
Come back with a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, item nine, Nick Thor, Wilson County Library, discussed request for purchase of equipment, staff, and paper from the library fund, handed out, freely provided.
Okay, it's not understanding that the library has a, a library fund that is approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in it, and we would like to use a portion of that this year for some things that we need at the library. We have a staff printer that squeaks like the gerbil hasn't been fed in days, so it looks like it may collapse at any time. So I gave you a list, and I also gave you the quotes that we have, the items, um, how I'd like to spend the first twelve thousand. Whatever's left, we would like to leave, um, we'd like to use about, I'd say maybe a hundred thousand for items for the new library, and then use the rest to reserve.
Would one of y'all want to make a motion for a can of oil for that sweep?
I would probably have to hear this, if I'm going with.
Have you gone over this?
Yes, she does have the fund remaining last week.
But in order to do that, don't you use your funds first, and then take the reserves quick then?
Yes, that's correct.
Right?
We, we have used all of the book money, and I believe all of the other equipment and computer money has been, um, not, it hasn't been encumbered yet, but there are plans to replace those computers that were, were running XP, and if they stop supporting.
So how much are you asking for to split this year?
Twelve, an extra twelve thousand.
An extra twelve thousand?
About a thousand, that's a hundred and eighty thousand.
And it's for equipment, what about?
For equipment, and then also, um, the majority of the ten thousand would be for, uh, new books, materials to circulate, and we'd also like to buy books to circulate as well. We have candles, but we'd like to have the notes, people can wipe them.
That would be a, this, this could be.
This would be a specific, yes.
Uh, I would, I would suggest that, uh, you, you, you've, you've looked over it and, and any, any discrepancy or anything that you, you run by hand or run by tongue before?
Correct, right.
Motion. Okay, Commissioner Marano, anything?
This, like furnitures, is mainly mechanical, I mean, that?
There are, um, three book trucks, but there's a small book trucks where we shall include, like, the current book trucks are like, they're hard to put through those ports. The ones that we're looking at buying are half that size.
Because you can use in the new library.
Everything we can use in the new library, sir.
And is it just twelve thousand dollars?
Just a twelve thousand, a hundred and eighty, that's ten book.
Commissioner Marano, solid favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Your brain sounds wonderful. I want to watch and look at it.
Item ten, discuss take action on interlocal agreements between the city of Auburn in Texas and Wilson County, Texas.
Judge, might I suggest that we pass that and talk about it when we talk about, uh, item fifteen?
Okay.
We do those at the same time.
Okay, with full of item fifteen, uh, Rick Marano, Wilson County, committed precinct three requests to give death to Southern Springs Volunteer Fire Department created on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, as matching.
Judge, can we go to the detective session or members?
Go ahead.
To the detective session.
Okay, um, you want to press on us to the end of the meeting? Item eleven, discuss, discussion of potential actions, discussion of potential actions to occur regarding Wilson County's pending seventeen forty-seven project, including, one, a report from the county judge on received notice of Texas, Texas eyes regarding the county's eligibility for a grant award, and two, uh, a report from county staff regarding procedures, the issues going forward. Mrs. Leanne, would you bring us up on that?
Okay, the judge received a notice of grant award, and, uh, Wilson County is eligible for nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, that won't go as, as far as we hoped, but it's better than nothing. So that is, that's the amount that we are eligible to seek reimbursement for on the projects that we had listed. Um, apparently there was some issues that different jurisdictions and law firms had of the original agreements that were provided, so Mr. Kidwell asked that we hold off, because there might be some changes to the agreement. And, um, uh, so once they're ready for us to sign that, then they'll let us know on that, uh, we can start working on the, uh, putting the project list together, uh, that's something that's going to have to be submitted, which it could be the first number, I think, six or seven.
The one that we've already submitted.
Yeah, we just make sure we all didn't change the order on those, and, um, get that together to submit with the agreement, let's see if that's, and they outline, uh, in their implementation procedures, they've outlined, uh, the process reimbursement. Um, I know one question I had was with the fees they wanted us to use, so that's something that we, they want to excel, I guess.
Twenty-five percent man?
The fees they wanted us to use, uh, when figuring divorce account, they wanted us to use the blue, the blue book rate, and that's a book that.
For equipment usage and all that?
Yeah, that you've got to purchase, so.
Labor, everything. There has to be copies of that, or, or think online.
It's not free, so, anyway, I think other jurisdictions had issued it, that's what I'm thinking about. Um, that's pretty much it, we'll just wait for the go-ahead on the agreement.
On that, three organizations can initiate, complete all required and advisable, communicable text files regarding the project, including preparation and execution, if not necessary or advisable, to properly accomplish projects and tasks, and, and for all related matters. Can we go ahead and vote to, we can proceed if information comes in with Leanne, we'll keep everyone informed as to what's going on with that work. Motion, Commissioner, file, second Commissioner Marano.
All right. Judge, once again, I would like to thank Leanne for all the hard work on leading us through this process.
Okay, going on into item twelve, B, ratified cert MOU.
This is a memorandum of understanding, uh, between, uh, Bear County and Wilson County, uh, back in, I think it was two thousand nine.
So anyway, I think other jurisdictions had issued that, that's pretty much it. We'll just wait for the go-ahead on the agreement.
Item three, organization, county, initiate, complete all required and desirable communicable texts out regarding the project, including preparation and execution, if not necessary or desirable, to properly accomplish projects in past and in the future, or with all related matters. We'll go ahead and vote to, if we can proceed, if information comes in with Leanne, and we'll keep everyone informed, as to what's going on with that work. Motion, Commissioner, files, Senator Commissioner Wiley, all the way.
All right. Judge, once again, I would like to thank Leanne for all the hard work on leading us through this process.
Okay, going on into item twelve, B, qualified search MOU.
This is a memorandum of understanding between Bear County and Wilson County. Back in, I think it was two thousand nine, Bear County was awarded Homeland Security Funds from ACOG based on the, the, they were the ones that were responsible for implementing a CERT program in the ACOG region. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Teams. The idea behind that is to train individual private citizens in your area to be able to help themselves, and so first responders can get there. As years progressed, they had enough funds, and they purchased trailers with some equipment to use for training. And they provided them to the different counties that have got some CERT teams and are willing to do the training. And so we have had a CERT trailer since two thousand nine, two thousand ten, that we have used for that purpose. And this is basically just updating the agreement, hadn't changed other than the date.
Okay. Gondas, file off there. I have seen you fill the permit, number one, permit number four ninety-two, three oh four, supply, precinct two, county road two oh seven, given approved. I will send the files, that's Mr. Gondas, office seven.
I hear.
And D is temporary ordinate information only. Item D, temporary ordinate, keep all these EOG resources, one through five, all those in precinct two, and the roads are two fifty-four. Two of them on two sixteen, one on two forty-seven, one on two forty-eight. That's information only. Item C, nonstandard flat variance, Roper's Ranch, lot fifteen, Miller, discuss and take action.
This is a variance that came to the committee last week, was given a favorable recommendation, the individual owns three lots.